Per tradition, we start our meetings with the pledge of allegiance and this evening, I'm going to ask Ms. Austin to lead us.
Thank you, Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some of you may notice, we're having some technical issues with our mics this evening, so we've improvised, and staff will be giving all of their presentations and comments up at the podium. So first on the agenda is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda. This evening, I have no request to speak. Next, staff correspondence, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair Leibiggen Commissioners, for bearing with us with our microphone difficulties tonight. Two items to note for you. You should have a memo from Kathy Allen in front of you regarding item number two, and then also to inform the Commission and anyone watching the meeting that we will have a scoping meeting on the general plan EIR next Wednesday at 6:00, downstairs in the Galleria, and that meeting is open to the public, and it's regarding the general plan EIR. So that concludes staff communications at this time.
Thank you, David. Next on the agenda is disclosure of ex parte communications. This time, planning commissioners should disclose any communications that they've had with applicants on the agenda. This evening, it's only staff prepared agenda items, so that will be a no. Moving on to the consent agenda, consideration of the approval for the minutes for August 6, 2015.
Motion approved.
Moved by Commissioner Sternfield.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Guerrero. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
I'm abstaining.
I'm abstaining also.
Mr. Moore and Ms. Austin abstain. Okay, regular agenda, public hearing regarding Resolution 15-3 PC regarding an amendment to the zoning ordinance for fueling stations. Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Chair Leibiggen members of the Commission. This item may look slightly familiar, that would be because on July 16, the Planning Commission heard a version of this. The city council subsequently heard the item and actually requested some additional changes to the status of fueling stations and asked that the item be returned to the Planning Commission. The council expressed concerns regarding a complete prohibition of fueling stations in the waterfront zone, and they felt that the complete prohibition could hinder emerging technologies such as non-petroleum based fuels, hydrogen being an example of that. The council asked staff to make additional changes and then return to them. Staff has presented two alternatives which we feel meet the council's objectives. The first would change fueling stations from permitted to a conditional use in the waterfront zone. This would allow for additional oversight for new fueling stations by the Planning Commission. An alternate two would change the non-conforming use section of the zoning ordinance and would add a revision which would address existing non-conforming fueling stations. It would allow existing gas pumps to be replaced with pumps for non-petroleum based fuels, allow for expansions of non-petroleum pumps, and allow for limited improvements and/or expansions. Staff has recommended alternative two. Staff feels that option allows for the effective prohibition of fueling stations in the waterfront zone, which was a goal of the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan. The council also, in their discussion, expressed a desire to ensure options were available for charging stations for electric vehicles, and that's why there's also the additional definition of retail charging stations that was not previously discussed. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Kathy. At this time, I'm going to open the public comment period and ask if, of which I have no actual request to speak, Kathy, sorry, but still, I have to open it, and bring it back to the Commission. And does anybody have any questions of staff? Mr. Moore.
I'm going to have this quick question for you because I don't quite understand it. A fueling station is a fueling station whether it's for petroleum products, hydrogen, or electrical, under our current status, because you said it that way.
Yes, basically, any retail.
And I don't understand how you can take one fueling section, be it gasoline, hydrogen, or electrical, and make it different than anything else, because now you're starting to put forth somebody's opinion of what's a better fuel, and we're letting electrical have a special exemption, and, you know, they're actually trying to develop charging stations for electrical. So if somebody had a ton of money and wanted to build one on the waterfront, you would have to allow an electrical charging station to be there. They haven't developed the technology to get it fast enough, but since they only go a short distance, they're trying to get it down to a fast charge of under five minutes, and I think it's more like about 30 minutes right now. But if somebody wanted to, they could actually have an electric charging station on the waterfront. And me personally, I don't think that's what I want to see on the waterfront.
Well, that's actually what we were going for with the definition, is we were trying to think ahead to that possibility and taking what the council had said and their concern, especially that electric be available. We tried to expand the definition, thinking for the potential that it's not here yet, but we're not planning just for today, we're planning for five, 10 years in the future.
So you wouldn't care, then, if it was right in the middle of a hotel, right next to a hotel? They bought one of the lots and built it there? I just personally, personally, I think they should be, if you're going to make them conditional, I think they should all be conditional. I'm not even sure we have the right to say that we want to pick one fueling station and give it a special exemption, because I would think that now you're starting to pick and choose what's best for the city when one, you know, it's either a fueling station or it's not a fueling station, is my point. And I don't care if we make them conditional, but I think we should at least have that option available to us, and let's not arbitrarily let them build one anywhere they want it.
Charlie, can I ask for some clarification? There is a fueling station onsite here, for example. There are chargers by the back door.
I don't consider that, that's not a fueling station.
Okay, that's what I was like, I would like to get clarification on.
See, I mean, I think we're going to have those fueling sites in a building, you're going to have a site in the building, you could have a site at your home, if it was in your garage, you could build it there. You're talking, they're saying a fueling station, and there's actually development for a station being designed now, even though they haven't got the technology to make it work, that would be just like a regular service station. And that's, I'm just trying to figure out in my own mind if that's really what you'd want to see on the waterfront.
Understood, that's the clarification I wanted.
So, can you have it in a building? Yes. Can you have it out here? Sure. I mean, could you have it in a residential section? I think you absolutely can. I'm just questioning if we should have a fueling station be a fueling station and not have some sort of a say on it, particularly in that area that we've tried so hard to develop.
I think that would be.
Well, when, if you looked at the memo that I sent you, the one zone that was inadvertently left off the chart was water, the waterfront zone, and these types of stations would only be allowed as an accessory use, they wouldn't be a standalone use like they could be in some of the other zones.
Well, I didn't read your memo tonight, and I admit that, it's a little late for me, but even, even at that, I still think a service station is a service station. And I'm not, I'm just not convinced in my own mind that we should arbitrarily pick and choose what we think is good for our community and say, this one's good no matter where it goes, and the rest of them all have to have a conditional use permit. And that's my point. I think they're either, all of them are together, or they're not. So you either allow them, disallow them, or make them conditional, but I think they all have to stay together in one lump sum. And that's my two bits worth.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification on the accessory use.
Okay.
I think that clarifies it for me, and so, for further clarification, a full fueling station would not be allowed, even if it's an electric station, on the waterfront, is that correct?
No.
Okay. But it would be allowed as an accessory use at a retail business, hotel, business park, something like that.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I am, I'm slightly confused by that explanation, because reading the definition of electric vehicle retail charging station says parking spaces with electric chargers provided with other uses, offices, residential, general, retail, et cetera, are not included in this definition. So if all of those things are not included in this definition, and it's an accessory use, then what does that, what does that leave?
The exceptions that it calls out there are like what we have right out front here, ones that are going to be in an office complex type of situation with a, tacked on to a retail center.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, maybe, what's, we're actually inventing a definition for something that doesn't even exist yet, and who knows if it ever will exist. You know, like a charging, a charging station, literally a charging station like we have here at the back of City Hall is a, you know, those can go, you can print them anywhere. But what we're talking about here is really a standalone facility that's like an AM Arco, but instead of gas, it's, you know, you can go in and plug in your electric car if we ever get to that point. So that's sort of secondary, you know, what's really, you know, the primary emphasis here was what improvements, if any, would we allow to any existing gas stations in, in the waterfront zone? And based on the council's direction to us, we've tried to return with this notion of they would be able to add non-petroleum based fuels, but otherwise would not be able to do any other expansions. The electric thing was our attempt to try also get at the council that shouldn't if, should those ever, you know, come to be where someone could develop an entirely electric, electric gas station, for lack of a better term, that's how we would address, address that, and since we create that as a separate entity, you know, it's, who knows if that will ever, you know, come to reality, those happening, but we certainly expect to see the individual charging stations, you know, going in more and more places. You know, in the waterfront areas, you know, the likelihood of someone being able to develop an electric charging, you know, standalone station there is probably not high, you know, given the land costs and, you know, things like that. But we certainly, you know, if the council, I mean, excuse me, if the Commission, you know, doesn't want to move forward with the retail, you know, electric charging station, you know, something we will take forth, you know, to the council, but this was our attempt to try to implement, is what we understood the council's direction was, and why they asked us to come back to the Planning Commission at that meeting a couple months ago.
Thank you, I am actually reading the definition a lot closer now, as my concern would be the, the stations that, for example, say you drive up and they drop out the bottom of your car, and add a new bottom of your car, which would be the battery pack, for example, that would not be included in this definition, from what I can understand. And I would, I would agree with Mr. Moore on, that's more of a service station, I think. However, considering electric vehicles, what you would, what I would be looking for would be charging stations near restaurants, near shopping, because you have to get out of your car for 20 minutes right now, and I think we would want to put them next to businesses, shopping, and restaurants, it's not a, it's not something anyone wants.
But that's permitted today, and that's permitted in this. All I'm saying is, they just took the, the fueling station part of it and eliminated electrical from the conditional part, and if you eliminate electrical, you've made a preference, and I'm not sure, I'm not even sure the Planning Commission has the right to choose what, what is and isn't a great fueling station. I mean, electrical happens to be probably less than 1% of all our cars out on the road, so if you're going to allow a fueling station, probably should allow gas, which we don't really want in that area. But if you're not going to allow gas, and you're not going to allow diesel, and you're not going to allow hydrogen, why would you allow an electrical service station to go in? And that, that was my only dilemma. Do I have a problem having one back here, having it at an office complex, having it anywhere? No. You know, I mean, if you're going to have it in an office building or a restaurant next to that, that's just a convenience next door. These are fast charging fueling stations that are being developed as we speak today, and there are people that if they ever thought they could get it, where they could charge something in five minutes and charge you $5 to do it, they're going to develop one and put it in. Now, where it's going to be, I don't know, but I just think we should control it like we would control any other service station in the community.
One, one way we could, you know, short, quickly, we could go and address Mr. Moore's concerns, if it were the pleasure of the Commission, is that the electric vehicle retail charging stations could also become maybe conditional in the waterfront zone if that's where, the way the Commission, you know, wanted to go. You know, this is something, we bolted on to this, it doesn't have to go this way. You know, our primary objective was addressing, you know, more standard fueling stations, and so we, you know, the Commission was supportive of that before, and then, you know, council, you know, gave us some additional direction, so that's why we brought this back tonight. But it, we certainly can make adjustments based on how the Commission feels.
Okay. I'll go to Bernadette first.
So, when I've seen proposed ordinance changes like we're, like we're seeing here with alternative two, it's typically because there is something specific that, that we have as governing bodies, that we have in mind, that we would like to include so it can be approved administratively, which means that it happens quicker, it reduces the lack of uncertainty for the business owner, the developer, those kinds of things. And while I think that, from the comments that we as a Commission made, we did want to address, you know, green technologies and fueling, we brought this up when we were discussing this last time, and it sounds like there was similar feedback from the council, I think that collectively, we're supportive, but one of the things that I'm just struggling with is, I'm, we've all kind of acknowledged that we don't really know what it's going to look like yet, and I think that staff has done a really good job of trying to cover our bases, but I'm, I'm just not sure that any of us can have that kind of certainty. Personally, I'm a little more comfortable with alternative one because it's, it's conditional, right, you're talking about a conditionally used permit. Again, that makes it, the approval process a little bit longer, it doesn't assume administrative approval, but it lets us as a Commission, you know, us as a governing body, whether it's us or the, the city council, a little more opportunity to go case by case. And I am comfortable with saying, listen, it is going to take a few weeks more of approval than just something that we can be approved administratively, so I just wanted to put that in perspective of what, what does this mean on the ground? So, that's, I don't even think this is on, I apologize.
It is on.
Is it? Okay. So, so that's, that's my perspective. I agree, I think that we're, it's tricky to try and create an ordinance based on something that we're not quite sure what it is yet. I'd be very comfortable in entertaining this like in a year, or next, or the following year, when we've seen what it could really look like. So those are my two cents.
Alex?
Very similar to my two cents, Chairman. So, given what Commissioner Austin just said, I wonder, could we hear a bit from staff about why they recommended alternative two over alternative one?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last bit?
If I understand, the staff is recommending alternative two.
Yes.
Why?
We felt it more closely achieved the goals that the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan wanted, which was effectively no fueling stations in, in the zone. This would deal with non-conforming uses, and essentially, just because of the fact that there is only one fueling station in that zone, this regulation would essentially apply just to that location if it chose to try to expand. The council, in speaking about that location, one of their concerns was if they wanted to expand like hydrogen in the future, by making it a non-conforming use, they couldn't swap out the petroleum pumps for some alternative fuel and whatnot, and so we looked for a way to create a scenario where what they wanted in terms of emerging fuels could occur and still keep the prohibition on the fueling stations in the zone.
Whereas with alternative one, there is a possibility that something could be approved that otherwise would not automatically be allowed on your alternative two?
Exactly. In, with alternative one, fueling stations would, would become a conditional use, which means an applicant could find a location, come in, file a conditional use permit, you know, we would do the analysis and bring it to you for approval, and then it would be up to the Planning Commission to determine whether it meets all the findings, et cetera. And so, although we don't think it, there are people clamoring to put gas stations in the waterfront zone, we felt that alternative two makes that much less likely, so.
Thank you. Did you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Andrew, did, I saw you squirming.
So, listening to conversation, I think there are several things that we're in agreement on. The first is not wanting full-service fueling stations with retail in this area of our city. The second is, we all agree that promoting electric vehicle charging stations in appropriate locations. The question is, we don't know what's going to be appropriate, or what may feel appropriate 10 years from now, or five years from now even. But the third piece, and it's the one that I hadn't been touched upon, but I'm kind of interested in, is the existing station.
Yes.
And allowing them to switch over to other technologies without there being any kind of city council or Planning Commission oversight. So my understanding, in alternative two, the non-conforming fueling station would be allowed to swamp valve pumps for non-petroleum based fuels, or expand without needing conditionally use permit, and that is something I have a concern for, only because, for the same reason that we're concerned about electric vehicle charging stations and what that definition is and what that means, we also don't know what the next fueling technology will be 10 years down the road, and I think that whatever it is should have some type of oversight and really public participation in, in the approval of that process, especially given what's going to be a high level of residential living in that area in the future. So I think, for me, there's, there's three touch points, I think we all agree that fueling stations with retail in that district don't work, we, I personally support electric vehicle charging stations, but what that looks like, I think we still need to flesh out more. But third, the existing non-conforming use, or what we're calling will be a non-conforming use, I think needs to have conditional approval for any type of expansion or swap out, regardless of the fueling type, but particularly that it's not petroleum, or that it's any, for any existing petroleum base.
Okay. I think that was a really good summary, so if, if I could put this into, how do we make this part of the policy? Can we make it, can we make the accessory category accessory and conditional with that? So, I believe that would address the concerns. So Kathy, on, on your handout with the zoning matrix, you have permitted, we would be leaving that alone, as proposed, sorry, not, not as existing, accessory and conditional, and then not permitted. With that.
You can also specify just for waterfront zone or for other zones, I think.
I mean, we can change.
I'm wondering if it's going to be the same concern, though.
Well, so my concern would still exist for the zoning ordinance for the non-conforming use, because we would, I think you need to add language specifically to Section 17.51.033 that says that they need to be conditionally approved, because you're, you're separating out that one existing station from all other future applicants, and so that, because you're doing that, you need to specify how that, that site would be handled. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not, I'm not saying no, but I think there's more that in addition.
So you wanted to add like a subset D that would essentially say?
Well, I think the first sentence, existing fueling stations in the waterfront zone may be improved or expanded with conditionally used permit.
Yeah, so I think the way we would, the simplest way to do that, we would just, because the Commission is also, I'm hearing, not interested in allowing any other improvements beyond these, these, what we've outlined, so it's more about how do they achieve doing that? So what we would probably just say is, in that first sentence, just call these conditionally permitted.
David? David, just one sec. I, I'm not sure that's exactly what he was saying. He said, there could be another fuel source that comes up that we don't even know about today, and, you know, so I'm not sure that he was saying that there's nothing new, because we don't know what may be coming as a new source of fuel.
Yeah, well, what we're, this section for first is primarily dealing with anything that's existing, so we have to get the criteria down to deal with any, any stations out there that are existing in this district. So I think that's sort of step one. And so, rather than allow these improvements specified on subsections A and B by right, those can be conditioned, you mean, you could, those can be conditionally approved if the Commission supports that, and so you basically would just have A and B and not C anymore. So basically what this, basically what it says is that, yeah, you know, in any existing fueling stations in the waterfront, you can do these improvements as specified below, but you're going to need to get a use permit to do it. So that's, that's certainly one, you know, one way to do this, and it gets, it gets to the same goal in the end, just gives us, you know, city more oversight to, you know, verify that they're really are replacing things, you know, with non-petroleum based fuels, you know, things like that. And then now move it, now the second part of this, now we're getting to the electric vehicle charging station, you know, concept, and again, this is a, would be a sort of a standalone facility, you know, so perhaps somewhat akin to the gas stations we're all known, except instead of gas coming out, we pump, it would be electricity.
Can I make a comment? And when I'm talking about a fueling station, I'm thinking of like a little 7-Eleven, but instead of having gas pumps, you've got electrical charging pumps. That's what's being proposed as a fueling station.
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking about, the little charging stations that are at a hotel or here or wherever, those are all permitted. I think that's what we all agree.
You're right, I imagine a regular gas station we see all these days, except for you go plug in your car instead of putting in a gas pump, but I mean, it would be, could be the very similar type layout than what we've all been, all been used to. So if the Commission is comfortable creating a separate category for those, then it's more a matter of how are those treated in the zoning districts, and I think we heard that maybe those could be conditional if standalone or allowable as accessory. You know, most critically, what to do with the waterfront zone, you know, right now. We, admittedly, we haven't really looked at, you know, the city, this, really citywide, we've been focusing on the waterfront area.
Mr. Tilly, as a clarifying question, the station that's out back of this building, is that, or is that not retail charging?
Well, I mean, it is retail, I mean, the people that, you know, use it, you know, have to be part of that network and they pay for it.
So, is there a business license attached to that location?
Yeah, the company that owns that and operates it does have a business license, I believe. I forget the name of it offhand.
My suggestion would be that, I think this definition just needs a lot more refinement to get to the point of what we are all talking about, because I think we're all talking about the same thing, which is that. But it's written in a way that I think several of us are concerned it's talking about something else.
Yeah, no, we are certainly not trying to make, you know, like call what we have back here, City Hall, a fueling station, albeit for electricity. I mean, that's, those are just, you know, improvements, you put them in a parking lot, you can put them anywhere.
See, I appreciate that, but in the same token, I disagree, because you have apps being developed that will tell you that that thing is there and available. So, it's not a fueling station, the fact that it's retail and everything, but in terms of, it is a place where the public can go and pay for fuel and fuel their vehicle, it is a fueling station. And so, I think, because of the technology and the newness of it, and how differently the technology's delivered than traditional fueling, we want to separate it, but in a lot of ways, a lot of those key things that make a fueling station a fueling station still exist. And so, I think we need to parse those out a little more to define what we're comfortable with versus what we're not comfortable with. And for me, that is a retail fueling station. Yes, it doesn't have a retail store attached to it, yes, there's only one or two pumps, but there's plenty of gas stations that only have two pumps in certain parts of the world, too.
Which makes me kind of go back to, that's one of my concerns with Alternative Two. It seems like we're trying to squeeze in everything that we won't, that, rather than trying to make all of our potential theoretical options, Alternative One to me is much cleaner. It's a little less certainty, but things, I mean, if you read the first sentence of, under Alternative One, the zoning can be changed from permitted to conditional, and that's, that's all I'm asking is that, we as a planning commission, and I think you bring up a very strong point, that there is not just the development of these sites, but also the licensing of these sites to operate. So, there are now two checks and balances where, you know, someone proposing to put in a quote-unquote "fueling station" would need to go through. And I'm comfortable with that, honestly, so.
I feel like I'm talking a lot, but I actually disagree with Alternative One. And the reason for that is because we would open the door to any type of fueling station being conditionally used. And I think we need to make it clear that in the waterfront district, we do not want fueling stations. We have one that's existing that we're willing to allow modernization to take place there with conditionally use permit, and we support EV charging stations, and there needs to be a mechanism for that to happen within a scope that we're all comfortable with. And so, that's the reason, I actually felt the same way you did at first, but then when I was thinking about it, like, if we're opening that door, we're not just opening it to EV or hydrogen, we're opening it to all fueling stations. And I don't certainly, I think if we know what the policy direction is, we should be clear about the general policy direction, and just find a way to work around the confusion of the definition.
Yeah, I think the EV stuff probably needs, you know, more thought, and that's something perhaps we should maybe separate from this and, you know, work on more, and perhaps for now, move forward with just how we would deal with fueling stations as they're currently defined in the waterfront areas, since that was the original mission, you know, from the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan. So, perhaps what we can really do is sort of create, go with alternative, go with Alternative Two, but leave the definition of fueling stations as is for now. And then, once we get a better handle on the electric vehicle charging concepts and how those are likely to be deployed in the real world, you know, return on that at a future date.
I agree with that recommendation. I think right now, there's, you know, a lot of information available from Commissioners Sternfels, and I think that's really important information we need to have our research on before we make a decision tonight.
This would deal with our immediate need, and then still allow us to have a little time to work on the rest of it going forward.
So, David, are we recommending moving this to council again, but omitting the electric vehicle retail charging station definition, and then putting electricity back under fueling station?
Yes, so the definition of fueling station will remain as is, and then really then what it comes down to-
As is with the electrical-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so then, really what it comes down to then is, for any existing fueling stations in the waterfront zone, is the commission favor allowing them to do some of these minor improvements on a by right basis or on a conditional basis?
On conditional, I think, I think we're all here, I'm hearing conditional, so.
So, that, we can, we can definitely, if that's the pleasure of the commission, and if you, if there's a motion, and you include in your motion direction to us to, you know, clean up the ordinance a little bit before we move it forward to council, we won't be able to change all of it tonight, then we will do that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just taking some notes. Martha, do you have comments or questions? Okay. Just wrapping up everything that we've talked about modifying on this, we're talking about adding a statement of conditional permitted use under 17.51.033. We, I had actually mentioned excess, adding and conditional to the accessory use, but we hadn't discussed that, so I'm not sure if that was agreed upon, or everybody was just silent on that.
The accessory use concept was for the electric vehicle charging stations. So, if we're going to table that portion of this now, then that part is-
Moot, okay.
So, in the end, if this were, if this were how it was voted on, existing fueling stations, water, fueling stations would not be permitted in the waterfront zone anymore. However, existing ones would be allowed to do these minimal improvements with a use permit.
I think that could start-
Are you going to say something, because I mean, I would guess the council may have said something about electrical, or are you going to say we're going to revisit the whole electrical concept at a later date?
Yes, yeah, we'll need to do that, for sure. We're not clear, we're not quite ready for that yet.
And also for clarification, what I'm looking at now is the memo that was provided today, and you're recommending approval as is, but we're not including Section 17.51.33?
No, we are. What would change there, essentially what would change in that definition is they would be, can become, those improvements would be conditionally permitted. And so, and then, two things would change. The zoning matrix would change to take fueling stations out of the waterfront zone completely, which was the commission's original recommendation to the council. But any existing fueling stations in the waterfront zone, should there be any, would allow some minor improvements or expansions under these criteria, but that would need to be done by a use permit rather than by right. So, this sort of hopefully threads the needle, whereas it accomplishes the original goal of the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan, which was to take fueling stations out of waterfront, but then does allow for what the council was directing, which was still to accommodate different types of fuels that may come down the pipe worse now and in the future.
Before we vote, can I get one clarification on this? Not to bring this back up, but the charging facilities that are currently allowed at retail City Hall, other businesses around town, how are those permitted? And how is it separate from what we're looking at right here?
Well, as, as, like, is this example here, you know, we, they're really, you know, they're not even addressed in our zoning at all as a land use, you know, when someone just wants to put in a charging station at a, at a location. I think that Commissioner Sternfels, you know, points about this station out here, I mean, it really is a retail station in a way, because, you know, we don't own that, you know, it's here, and the company came and put it in. So, we, that is something we need to get a handle on, is how we're going to treat those. I think we certainly would want to encourage this type of individual ones that are just in parking lots and parking garages in the future. But we've probably got a little ahead of ourselves with trying to invent a definition and zoning for a standalone, you know, electric gas station essentially, that, you know, doesn't even exist yet, who knows, may never exist. But at least there should be time to revisit that and then get a handle on how we want to deal with these at all, if we want to look at them from a zoning standpoint.
Would then, the 17.70, talking about definition, when we talk about electrical, are you just going to say this is going to be revisited?
Well, we'll leave the existing definition of fueling station alone. We won't add the electric vehicle retail charging station thing at this time, but we will tell you, and we will tell the council, that we will look at the whole electric vehicle thing, you know, as its own issue, you know, in a later zoning ordinance update, and perhaps following the general plan, provide some policy direction on those.
So, Mr. Tilly, I appreciate you and team working with us through this. I know the rest of my colleagues do as well. I do want to offer my assistance and support to you as we move down in developing this new definition. There are some new resources out there in some other cities that are grappling with a similar issue, that I think we could probably both collectively, and I'm certainly willing to help individually, fix this can of worms that we've run. But I appreciate you guys working through us, with us on this.
Commissioner like a summary one last time of what I think you're doing?
Yes.
So, we will follow your past direction, whereas fueling stations will, as they're currently defined, including electricity, will not be allowed in the waterfront zone at all anymore. First, so that basically means no more new ones. However, any existing ones out there may do some of these improvements, which are essentially about being able to add non-petroleum-based fuels at some point in the future, but via use permit rather than permitted. So, there would be a zoning matrix amendment, and then invent this new Section 17.51.033, but just have it read as being conditional.
Okay, just another clarification. Did we just prohibit these small charging stations in waterfront?
No, our zoning ordinance will remain silent on those. So, they are not, they are not expressly prohibited anywhere.
Because that would be opposite of what I would want to accomplish here.
No, that is not our objective either.
Okay. All right, it seems like we have silence and maybe a couple head nods, so I would look for a motion, and please try and be as complete as possible regarding text changes.
I love how you're looking at me.
I am looking at you.
So, I would like to make the motion to approve the ordinance as amended in the following ways, under Section 17.51.033, that letters A and B be conditional and letter C be removed, and that the definition of electric vehicle retail charging station be deleted under 17.77, and that the existing definition for a fueling station that includes electricity remain the same.
And under that, I'm assuming you mean for Alternative Two? You are, you are moving Alternative Two?
Correct, I believe that's the one that was brought before us, right?
Yes, as recommended.
And that we will carry forth the Pioneer Commission's previous direction to make fueling stations no longer permitted in the waterfront zone.
Before I take a second, I'm going to close the public hearing. Signated by Ms. Guerrero. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, moves forward, thank you. Okay, moving on to number three. This is an update on the Southport Development Projects and Infrastructure Improvements. Mr. Leth. I can never get this name right, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Chair Leibig and members of the commission. Item three is an informational item to update the commission on all the major current and planned development projects in Southport, and here's a map. At the second commission meeting in July, the commission requested an update on development projects in Southport, and staff has waited to bring this item until such time that there was another item on the agenda. So, on the screen is a map of Southport, showing the areas where development projects are either proposed, or have already been approved but yet to be built. To go over the projects, I'll start in the northwest corner and work clockwise around. Go to the next map here. All right, so, starting off with the large one there in purple, number one, Southport Industrial Park, S.I.P. It's a master-planned business industrial park. It was approved before the city incorporated by Yellow County. It is vested in a development agreement. Currently, the master developer is building warehouse distribution warehouses, quite large ones. They are actively building new ones, they have three in the works right now that are being built. They just completed about 470,000 square foot warehouse, and Norcal Beverage just moved in there last month. And they also have submitted lot line adjustment applications and a parcel map application for, to continue that movement. So, they are aggressively building new warehouses out there. Moving down to number two, Promenade, is a residential development, zero lot line, 222 units. It was approved last year. They haven't submitted building permit applications yet, so we're still waiting on that one. Number three, Seaway, that is owned by the port. Nothing currently is in the works there right now, but it's been envisioned as an industrial business park similar to S.I.P. Moving over to number four, which is the Westbridge Plaza Phase Two, that area is where the Taco Bell and McDonald's is. Jefferson Storage, just, or Storage Facility has moved in there, and there are two vacant lots left. Staff has received some inquiries about maybe putting a gas station in one of those lots that's still available. Number one, the Stone Lock property is currently being considered for a development agreement between the city and the port. The planning commission considered the development agreement on August 6th, and it's currently being considered by the Port Commission and City Council. The port intends to reacquire the property, and ultimately, ultimately the site will be master-planned. Number two up there, the Summer Place Assistant Living Facility, it's number five on the staff report. It's an assisted living facility. The project was approved in early 2014, they submitted for building permits, and they're still being reviewed. Several departments haven't signed off on them yet. Number three, the Newport Estates, it's a continuation of the houses that are already out there. This would be Phase 10. The houses out there are selling quite quickly, we've gone out there and done finals on them. They've indicated that the houses are selling out before they start building, so they are aggressively building more. The next phase is sixty, six units, sixty-five units? Sixty-five. And there will be a park included as well with that, where the Oak Tree Stand is. So, number four up there, the Hart Monopine Telecommunications Facility. It was approved in September 2014, and building permit plans for the project are currently under review. Number five, Liberty, is a master-planned community comprising of 1,500 residential units on approximately 450 acres. It'll include a mix of densities, lot sizes, and unit types. It'll have a small neighborhood commercial center. It'll include schools, parks, and a recreational complex. The project is currently deemed incomplete, and the third round of recent middle is anticipated for later this month. So, we can go now into the levy improvements that WestAFCA is doing. So, number one up there is Stone Lock. The Village Parkway is, it can be extended through there, and that should be the starting building pretty soon. Number two is, South River Road will no longer be, exist as we know it today. It will be demolished, and a new levy will be built, set back from the current levy. be built, set back from the current levy. And in order to accommodate traffic, Village Parkway will be extended south to Gregory Avenue, and that should be starting up next spring, the, the southern portion. So there will be two segments of South River Road that will remain. One is a Loop Road for the Yacht Club in Shrewd Harbor RB Park, and also a little section at the very southern end will be cul de sac to give access to a couple houses down there.
Before, before you move on, can you talk a little bit about the relationship as far as timing for the development of Liberty and the Village Parkway extension? I know that's a question that's come up a lot in the community.
Yeah, I, want, hey David, can you jump in on this one? Timing of Village Parkway and Liberty?
The Village Parkway extension, I think WestAFCA board already approved a construction contract for that, so that work should be getting started fairly soon and finish up probably into early next, you know, next spring.
Question, so not, not from, not talking from the bridge to the existing, but I'm talking from the existing Village Parkway South?
That's, yes, that's what I'm talking, Village Parkway South. WestAFCA is gonna build an interim version of that, and that contract's already been approved. It's one of the very first things they need to do to get, get access to some of those properties that currently get it from South River Road, because South River Road, for the most part, once they start the levy improvements, will go away and will not be coming back. So this is one of the most important and early steps, and they, so they separated that out from the rest of the levy construction package from a contract standpoint. So you should see that start to happen fairly soon.
And then is WestAFCA, who's paying for the Village Parkway extension?
Well, this is the, this is the great part about this, that they will get a substantial cost share out of this with the state, because they were, because otherwise, you know, there needs to be a levy patrol road and maintenance road, and you, they were able to convince the, the powers that be that, let us, you know, build this road, which we plan to do it, because it will serve the same purpose. Otherwise, we would have had a road paralleling the levy, and then another road essentially right next to it. So that's why WestAFCA is only building an interim version of the road, and then as development comes, they'll improve it to its full, full capacity. But this was actually a very significant, was that a road right next to another road probably would not have been optimal. So this, this was a big win, and so for WestAFCA.
And then, well, I'm sorry, one more question. Do we have a sense of what the anticipated development impact fees for transportation would cover for a, we don't have a permanent Village Parkway extension from Liberty, or have we done that analysis?
We haven't calced that yet. This is something that will, this is a somewhat unusual situation where a portion of the road was already built by a third party, but we, they will certainly need to improve, you know, the rest of it to its full capacity. It is two lanes through here, until you get to Lake Washington, but what will need to be put in is the, you know, the ultimate, you know, curb gutter sidewalk, you know, median, you know, all of that through here. So we believe this is actually happening many, many years, if not decades, before otherwise would have had to happen, because it would have been preceded, develop, development would have needed to sort of necessitate it, and that probably would have been, be a long time from now.
Thank you.
All right, to continue on, Yarborough and River Park, both master planned communities. They both received development agreements. We got, timing is unknown for both of these, are still a little up in the air. Staff expects the current landowner, landowner to eventually file an application to modify the River Park master plan, but nothing, we haven't heard anything from Yarborough as of yet.
You know, on the River Park one, I guess I forget who developed that. But is that one gonna come back to us? Because of, I mean, they've lost a bunch of land to the levy, they've turned a bunch of land back to the original landowners, so it's not the same project anymore?
No, it's inevitable that will come back to the Planning Commission, you know, in some way, shape, or form. You're right, that property has, been most impacted by some of the planned levy improvements, so some of it will, will need to be reworked. There's a different developer entity that owns the majority of the land now, so the developer, Richland, that got it entitled, you know, lost it, you know, a long ti, long time ago. So I think it's inevitable, and we've been, you know, we've met with them off and on over the last few years, and I know they're, they are working on reworking some of it now that the levy footprint is pretty well established of what it's going to be. So there's no timetable on this, but there's no way that the original project as could be laid out exactly the way it was approved previously. But most of it, I think, could probably still happen, but would need to be reworked to some extent, without a doubt.
Yarborough still together as one project?
Yes, yeah, same landowner has all that, so not much, not much movement on Yarborough as of yet.
You know, just as a, and I had this asked of me, if Yarborough decides to build, are we gonna make sure that the golf course is still down there?
Well, that's part of the development agreement, and part of the obligations as they exist, you know, currently.
So if, if they decided not to build the golf course, would that project come back to us?
Yeah, then I think we'd be going back pretty close to square one, I think, if the, if there ends up not being a golf course. That really was the primary part of the whole
Well, that concludes the presentation on the different development projects. If you have any questions, I'm available, as well as David.
Thanks, Seamus.
Yep.
I actually have one question, specific to the Liberty specific plan. Can you go over how this complies with the Southport framework plan, given its location and how it, how it generally fits into the structure of the Southport planning?
Sure. This is the one project that we put on the list that's unique, because this is one that has not been approved yet, and will be coming before the Planning Commission, you know, likely sometime next year. So that is an area that has been planned and developed, planned for development. It's part of the northeast village. From a unit count standpoint, they are, as a project is currently constituted, they're very close to what the framework plan has allocated in that area. There are some, some nuances with framework, with terms of compliance with the framework plan that we're, you know, we're still working out. But for, for the most part, even though they are moving some land uses around from what the framework plan has, on a macro level, they are sort of filling in what, an area that had been planned to develop. And they too have also had a lot of property that's need to be acquired for WestAFCA, and so we are working with them and have been for a while now. So, but ultimate framework plan compliance will be decided by the commission and the council when it comes forward next year.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions on staff presentation?
I have two quick ones, if you don't mind. For Newport Estates, the park that's planned to be there, do you have a timeline on when construction will start on that park?
I don't offhand. That's part of their, they are moving on to their last couple of villages out there. I think they call units 10 and 11. So I would have to actually follow up and find out. I don't know the timing offhand, I apologize.
And I think it's my understanding that developer also owns that vacant chunk of land that's right across from the retention pond there, in terms of the beginning of the development, where their model homes are?
Yes, there is a property right there at Stone Gate and Village Parkway on the corner, I think probably northeast corner, that is owned by Sino, the developer out there. That's a multifamily site, but there's, there's no plans for that at this point in time to actually develop it, that I'm aware of.
And then I, one more question in regards to South River Road. Does the road need to be demolished as part of the construction process for the new levy?
Yes, yes.
Into bike path, or some other-
Well, the existing levy, as I understand, will actually be degraded to allow for seasonal inundation. So we're, what we're expecting is that the, the new levy will hopefully allow for formally recognized, you know, bike and pedestrian access, but there will no longer be a vehicular road up there anymore that's open to general public. This has been a longstanding good goal in the framework plan and the general plan, for Village Parkway essentially replaces South River Road as a circulation element.
I just didn't, I didn't know if it had to be, it sounds like it needs to be torn down in order to meet the goals of the project, but-
Yeah, because really it's the levy that it's underneath that road that will be degraded, and so you'll have some seasonal inundation, sort of, in a way, sort of straightens out the river and the max flows, because one of the biggest challenges with the river snakes is you get a lot of erosion and scouring, which is one of our biggest challenges out there.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much. That was very helpful, actually, putting all those pieces together.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, moving on, that was our last item on the agenda, and there's no action on that piece. Moving to informal discussion.
One thing I, I'm curious about, for a while there, we're talking about different components of the general plan, and then we have been thinking, so I'm just curious what the status is, and if we will be hearing about-
Next meeting, we'll be doing that.
Chop, chop. No, 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 I appreciate that, thank you.
I'd like to also request some consideration on doing a similar update for the northern part of the city and some of the development and planning work that we have going on there.
Do you want redevelopment waterfront, or both?
I think a presentation similar for the northern part of the city would be very helpful.
Yeah, we do plan to do that also at one of your upcoming meetings, and we've had this one kind of in the can for a little while. We wanted to make, wait till we had a full, you know, full commission to do that, especially our newer commissioners, as many of those projects are still out there and will probably come to life one of these days, but they were obviously before your time.
Thank you.
Hope so, there were some great projects there.
That's right.
With that, and I thank you for this project, because I think this is very helpful to all of us, and some of us have been around a long time, so we've known these projects are there, but some of you are relatively new, and it, I think it helps a lot to get back in focus where we're at, out there. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn. She got the second in there.